The meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. For ladies and gentlemen, under God, in his physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me just click admit here and then all. So Makler is absent, Graylo?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Easy?
Here.
Hammond's?
Here.
Great, any conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second, and I'd offer an amendment if we could have a brief grant update discussion. So agribusiness and flat grant, just.
Okay, so we'll add that on after the budgeting before the. So is there an amended motion? There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Approve the minutes. Second.
So motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any visitors to be heard? No visitors. Then Lisa, you are registered deeds budget. So exciting.
It's all right. They're always on now. Yep, we changed it.
Awesome.
Well, here I am. Well, welcome. Hello, everybody. I don't know if you guys looked at it, but I'm really not asking for much. I think the only thing I'm asking for a little more of is travel and conference, obviously with things getting more expensive, going to peer is just a little more expensive. And then next year, I will probably be going to peer three times because I like to go for the new officer training since I'm on a I'm on a committee, so I have to make sure I stay certified. So I'll probably go three times, which costs a little more, so. Other than that, the other thing I'm asking for a little more of is, you know, the service and fees, and that's just to pay for my software, my continuation of the of the new software that we got. So I continue to make quite a bit of money with my Black Knight money. So I like to always report on that. I think in the last year, we've made almost $6,000 on Black Knight money, which just goes to the general fund. So I don't know if you guys know what that is. So there's a company out of Florida that they bulk purchase our documents, which is public, you know, our public records anyway. They both purchase that for a dollar a page every month. And then they use that as like an analytical company that they they look and see like what the average mortgage is for this area and what the average home, you know, costs in this area. So they buy our information, which is all public record anyway, per dollar a page. And so it kind of helps because it's like I said, just this last year has brought in about $6,000 for the general fund. So it's a little extra that I can do.
You're always for that.
Yeah, right? So yeah.
Yeah, other than that, it looks pretty, pretty close even. Any questions?
Just out of curiosity, how does that dollar a page bulk rate compared to the regular price?
That's what the price is. Yeah, that's codified law. Yeah, codified law is a dollar a page. So like with our title companies, we give them a little break because they are our backups. So you know, like Clay County Abstract and First Code Title, they are our backup. So if something were to happen to any of our records, like if our system went down, they have all of our records. So we charge them only a flat rate. But like if anybody comes into the office, they're paying a dollar a page.
Okay, that's what I thought I remembered.
Yep, it's a dollar a page. And so for a Black Knight, you know, they paid a dollar a page. A lot of companies that have contacted wanting to buy bulk data, they don't want to pay the dollar. They want a better rate, which I can't do because law states that I have to follow the law. So yeah.
Good deal.
And they're the only ones that I've, I've had other companies contact me, but they're the only ones that I've, I mean, I looked into them right away when I got, when I took office, and they're the only ones that were really reputable that I trusted enough to do that, so.
Anything else? Well, thank you, Lisa.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, looks good.
Hey, Carrie.
All right. So my budget for next year, if you look at elections, it's considerably lower because it's an off year and I don't anticipate having any special elections or anything like that. So that should be considerably less. Typically, I go back and look at previous years, what we've done when we haven't had a special election. And so I think I'm, I'm pretty safe in my estimates there. We do still have maintenance fees for our equipment and things like that because they do come out and do like hardware firmware updates and things like that. Bring the off year so that we are ready to go for election year. So I think unless you have any questions on that, we'll move on to the auditor budget. And that one, I had included some money in there for a new copier lease under the equipment line, and so that one's a little bit higher. Also didn't know where we were going to be at with our software, but we'll get into that in a minute. I think, I think I can probably take about 35,000 off of that software budget. So that would be good news. I was just wasn't sure when Bossa Nova goes away. For those that are out there on Zoom and don't know this, our current software we've had since the late seventies. She's kind of a one woman show. She wrote the software back in the seventies and we have used it, updated it, things like that ever since. She wants to retire, you know, as she should be able to retire and enjoy life. And so that put us in a position where we needed to find software that could do all the things that we currently have. And so it's been really hard to predict on what timeline we would find replacements for those things. I had budgeted for it this year. I didn't think we would get it done. So then I put it again, in again for next year and not really knowing what the cost would be or what annual maintenance contracts and things like that would be. I think we can safely reduce it by 35,000. So yeah. And, and that should give us plenty to also cover any services that, any conversion services we would need.
So just to make sure I'm in the right spot here. So we're on our, our data processing line and last year there was that substantial jump to 75, right? And so then you're saying that 75 requests for 2025 can be reduced to 40. Is that right? Awesome.
And that, I mean, I, I think the following year probably will be even less for 2026. Just because we are going to have some conversion costs from our current software company and plus the, the fees, annual fees from the new software. So once we get over that hump and we are fully converted, then that, that should go down further. Other than that, didn't really increase too much. I did increase the travel a little bit just because like Lisa said, the hotel costs and things like that are going up, so. And we have to stay certified if we want to serve on these committees and, and, you know, be mentors to the other auditors and registers of deeds out there.
Is there any change in the professional services and fees line or is that just trying to track better?
Trying to keep track better, yeah, just trying to keep it up to current market.
Yeah. Bump in the utilities line as well.
That kind of reflects some of the change we've had in the last year or so with Vonage. I just wanted to keep that accurate. Again, when we switched from our old phone system where we didn't have more than one line, we didn't have the whole functions, the things that, you know, we really needed to have in today's world. We didn't really know what that was going to cost each month for each office. And so I think each office has kind of adjusted accordingly, and that's just what that is. Sort of like the current.
And copier supplies, did that move to another line?
I got rid of that and moved that over to supplies. It just seemed silly to me to track paper and things like that separately. None of the offices had a copier supplies and for some reason we were the only one that did. So I just moved it over to supplies and got rid of that line.
But I like that continuing to try to align the different, different budgets.
And I don't know if it's because maybe back in the day, my office was the only one with a copier. I don't, I don't know.
Makes sense.
Yeah. But I just thought to keep things consistent, I would get rid of that. Regular supplies, so.
Any other questions? Software.
Whoa, I am, I am super, super excited about this. I have looked at several different payroll software, so I'll start with that one because that's really the, one of the big ones for us. Looked at several different companies out there and the one that I kept coming back to is Paylocity. So then I started talking to alternative HR that helps us and they're our contractor for HR services. And they have one person that handles a whole lot of different payroll softwares and for, for all their different clients. And Karen had said, you know, Jessica is really notoriously picky. She picks apart these software programs. She doesn't have one that she really loves, but Paylocity is her number one choice. Like she's probably 95% loves that software and you'll never get her to 100. And so, so that was kind of a selling point to me. And then they had a new gal that came on, Tasia. She's the one that helped me with the hiring process for Emily. And Tasia has worked with Paylocity as the payroll administrator in the past. And she loved it, you know, she said, really, this one's going to work well for you. It has a lot of functionality that we don't have right now. So right now we're very basic. We enter all the hours in. We kind of double check and make sure that everything's calculated correctly. The employees get their paycheck. Pretty basic stuff. And Paylocity will give us a timekeeping system. It will give us the ability for employees to have an app on their phone to pull up their pay subs, their W2s. It will handle the W2 reporting in January for us. It handles so many more options as far as payroll. A lot of it can be more automated as much as we choose it to. It can figure the shift differential for Andy's departments. It can, you know, if he chooses to use that function. It can track sick and vacation requests so the department heads, the employees can put in a request on their app on their phone. The department heads can go in and approve or not approve accordingly. It'll help track that. There's just so many functions that we don't have right now. All the reports that we need to pull. Really, really great software. I had a couple kind of demos with it and I've been really impressed. And the bonus, Patty says it will convert nicely with her. We could get that done yet this year, possibly by October.
Awesome.
So and then, you know, I, I don't know if you all want to take a position on that now and move on to the next software and kind of have a discussion over everything.
I think those options, features, W2 sold me because all that stuff. That's those are great features.
Incredible features.
You've got pretty complex payroll really for the county with all the different departments, different people, all the different kinds of jobs.
Yeah.
Different types on some, but not on others.
Has the flexibility for us to, you know, if the highway department has their own timekeeping and that, you know, the sheriff's office has some of their own timekeeping functions right now. It, it allows us to kind of personalize that and customize it to what they need and what we need. And very flexible. It's a, it's a bigger company, so there's not any fear of them going out of business. They have several locations across the country.
Plus employee have access and buy an app.
Huge for us, huge.
It saves you time.
Yeah, it seems like the kind of thing that long term could help us delay getting another part time or full time employee down the road as we grow.
Like you've done the research.
It also has onboarding and employee record keeping functions so that if we get new employees, we can have their new hire packet ready to go within the software. And then they can just log in on their computer or their phone, complete the documents that they need to complete. It keeps electronic payroll files, so that helps us with our our paperless, like we're out of storage space. And so I'm trying to go as paperless as we can and that will be an incredible help with that.
Awesome.
Easy.
Well, I like it.
The next one is Central Square. And that will be our accounts payable, our accounting software. Patty has done a whole lot of research for us to find one that would do the things that we needed to do. And then in the end, when she gets ready to retire, we're not left hanging with any part of our software that we will have, even if we have several programs that work together, we'll have everything we need to make it work. And this is the one that she ended up recommending. I think she looked at about eight others. She has worked with it in the past. They, they have several municipalities here in South Dakota that use it. Central Square also does, interestingly, safety, public safety software. So the sheriff's office and the police department use it already. It's been around. Gosh, I think Patty said she's, she has worked with it with the city of Platt for probably 30 years. It's been a long time. And so it will do all the things that we need to do on the accounting and accounts payable side. And very, very cost friendly. This is probably the lowest cost software that we have looked at of all of them. I think they just have the volume and so they keep it low cost. Different, different companies have different business models and I think that's theirs is to probably deal with more volume and lower costs. It also has some features that we don't currently have. Again, going paperless, it has the ability to scan the bill in. And in the software keeps it with our entries for accounts payable. So that if we need to go back and look at a check or a bill or something, we can just pull that all up right there.
That sounds like a great time saver.
Our auditors are going to love that. We're going to love that because we won't have to go back and dig through paper for two years, so.
The only thing I wasn't quite sure about, you know, reading through it was public administration project management, management services as incurred in public administration technical services as incurred. And each of them have a dollar figure attached to it. So what, I'm not, I wasn't sure what that, like how would you, I wasn't sure what those are or how you would incur them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't anticipate using the project management or the, the public administration. So I think those just probably would not be part of our costs. They're including them just in case we would decide we need them. I don't foresee needing those. I don't track things by project necessarily. The highway department does, they have their own software for that.
Yeah, that was my only question. It looks, looks good.
Yeah, it looks like to me like, you know, both sets of software embedded in pretty well.
A lot of work has gone into this.
But that's the main thing. Overall, Central Square, for instance, has over 8,000 communities that it, that it provides service to. So we need a motion on this?
Yeah, so Central Square has theirs here ready for you to sign. The way that Paylocity works is after they have approval, then they will send over the paperwork to be signed by DocuSign. And Michael has looked everything over for both companies and he's confident with those, so. Just need approval.
We'll make a motion to approve the Central Square contract and the Paylocity contract.
I'll second.
So there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else? In your budget?
I don't think so.
Okay, so we'll, we'll expect to see the Paylocity contract come in sometime in the next few weeks.
Yep.
Great.
It's exciting.
Very, very, you know, it, it will professionalize us in a way we've.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's been a struggle to do.
It has. I, I don't want to minimize Patty's services at all. She's been fantastic over the last, what, 40 years? But, you know, she deserves to retire. She's worked hard for us and for the rest of the accountings that she services. And so that's where we're at.
It's time.
But yeah, with new software comes new features.
Yeah.
I guess it's okay.
Now it is, yeah.
Yeah, well, thank you for doing all the due diligence on that because I know, I know what that's, that's a huge amount of work.
It is, and it will, it, the next few months are going to be very, very hectic in my office. Emily just started yesterday, so she will essentially be learning four new softwares because we have the total boat system and we have currently have Bossa Nova from Patty. And then the two new software systems. So she'll be learning a lot. We have election coming up, so she'll be learning that. And I will be learning all the software with her and, and Nicole. And so it'll be hectic, but we'll make it through.
Good. All right, so Clay County Park?
Um, let's see. We don't have, I don't think I have any part news, no.
Didn't you want to talk about some?
But I do have, uh, yeah, so I've got the two grant discussions, so, yeah. So the, so the flat grant discussion, just to update people on status. There's emails going back and forth between agencies, getting the things straightened out. We will be expecting a contract coming that would be between us and the DOT that would, that would lay out or, or maybe a memorandum of understanding of, of that we would invoice the DOT. The DOT would invoice the federal government. The federal government paid the DOT, the DOT would pay us. So, so that's where we're at is getting those, the both together. But I'm hoping that based on the emails I saw recently, I hope that maybe it'll be ready by next meeting for you to look at and sign. And then agribusiness grant, I wanted to give a little update on that because it's been a little while. We, we applied in April. This was to support infrastructure development for the Southeast, Southeast Co-op Elevator Project on 50. And yesterday had a call with the DOT. Travis and I were both able to attend. Rod was in, you know, the call, Carrie was in on the call. And basically the DOT walked through some of their preferred design and safety concerns. They'd like to see a turning lane for, let's see, for eastbound traffic, I'm getting this right, into four, oh, it's the 400th Street, 456 is it, I think? And then if we leave 313 open, then that would just be, they'd be able to turn right to go out there. So there's some discussion of, of the, the details there. And then with that, with that in mind, that's then going to go to our engineers to get a cost estimate because we need a cost estimate for that. And that was something that I think both Travis and I were a bit surprised by that the state was indicating that they, they generally would get some local funding for the state highway improvements. So my expectation was that, you know, the only thing that would be expected of the county as far as an investment would be in the, the improvements to the county road system. But with the state on the line, they were certainly indicating that their expectation is, well, I guess the right way to put it is maybe a common formula. This isn't anything that's in statute or anything, but a common formula is one third, one third, one third pay. And by that they mean one third paid by the state, one third paid by the local government and one third paid by the developer. So, so we will certainly have a lot of discussions, but at this point, things are just sort of on pause while we get those, those cost estimates. Rod was in on the call and he got, got a message back from, from our engineers that the county road improvement portion could be, could be up to 1.7 million was, was where their estimate is for that, so.
So we would have a nice loop for incoming outgoing traffic, so that'll be preserved in the state. The only question was whether they would like to turn a lane. But they would like one, but not have to pay for it all.
That's interesting, given who's got the tax capacity.
And some shoulder, shoulder strengthening as well, so. So, so about 1,400 feet, I think, of, of roadwork totally, total on Highway 50.
About a quarter mile of turn lane. That's a turn, left turn lane, so if they occupy the median.
Yeah. Yeah, left turn for Eastbound on 50, yep. So just wanted to give that update to everybody and that, that's where we're at right now, but yeah, well, when we get firm cost estimates on the Highway 50 improvements, then we'll be able to continue that discussion, so.
Unrelated, but semi-related. I noticed that there's crossing improvement supplies on the railroad down at Saginaw Avenue, but I've been going back and forth.
Oh, are there?
Plug thing down there. And I, as I recall, that was one of the ones that they wanted to charge us for. And I haven't heard anything about charges on that. So apparently you're Burlington Northern must be going ahead on that project on their own, on their dime. So like I say, it's not really related to this grant, but it's.
No, and there was some discussion about that, having, you know, two trucks crossing at two railroad crossings there and that there might be, have to be some crossing improvements for the Southeast Elevator Project as well. But there's, there is a federal grant program open now for crossing eliminations and improvements with a grant application ending September, something late, late September. So I can share that link around to you guys if you, I'm not sure how it hit my inbox, but yeah, but I'll share that with you guys if you haven't seen it, so.
That railroad line is essentially stopped for the time being at least with the bridge out at Sioux City as well as the bridges out on the west side of the mill. They're driving new pilings because the both ends of that, that bridge out here, the railroad bridge is, is apparently deficient as far as being able to hold that load. And while I was looking at that, I was, I looked downstream and the sheet pile improvement the railroad did a few years back when the Goodman's, Goodman's property was, was damaged by the flood, that same, same flood and a previous flood had taken out, nearly taken out the railroad line about a quarter mile downstream from, from Agop. And that, that looks pretty perilous to me. I didn't walk down there to have a close look, but the sheet pile is all pretty much exposed to some depth at this point now. So I'm hoping that that won't be an issue to us transportation wise to serve the community in the area with railroad service. So it's really no good place for them to move without excavating back into the bluff quite a ways to move the railroad back into the bluff a ways. That would involve quite a change to that neighborhood out there. So I just wanted to bring you, you know, let you know that I had looked at that and that's a possible issue going forward. And I really believe that we may end up with sheet pile repairs necessary on some of our bridges also.
Okay.
Because of the quarrying downward of the river and that's going to be, you know, after floods, it's. That's going to be, you know, after floods, it's likely to stabilize at lower and lower elevations of the base of the. Of the river channel and uh so places where we need to. Uh, do the repairs, uh I think going forward, it may be the riprap isn't sufficient anymore. In a lot of the places we may have to repair, especially on Missouri. On uh. On the lower Vermillion. So.
I was on Zoom last week and I cut out a couple times on when Rod was talking, the bridge on three oh nine on Cabernet. Did that inspection get completed? Is there issues with that bridge? As I see, it's still not open.
Uh, you recall? I don't.
Is that the one where the the I think that there was some washing out around the supports at the bottom of it, I think, yeah.
Yeah, they're inspecting every bridge and um there's a bunch of them that um Rod said that um are problematic. But still um safe enough for traffic. I mean, he talked about Dawson Road and. What's the other one? Was it Dakota or Chestnut? Dakota, yeah. Uh, so, but I I don't remember if he, what he said about that particular one.
It's it's still closed, so it's just.
I'm guessing it's not.
Done the inspection and found some issues.
And I think he told us something about that, but I just don't remember, right?
So was that the one where there was the severe eating out around where it was last?
That's at the, that's the Dakota Street Bridge.
That's the Dakota Street.
Dakota Street, there is a, there is a big. Uh, circular Eddie-like erosion.
Yeah.
It's just upstream from that bridge.
That's right.
And there's a significant erosion both ways, both upstream and downstream and some tree issues over on Dawson.
There was one bridge that needed additional column repairs. That was gonna be part of a change order or something, was it that bridge? I just don't remember which one it was.
Yeah, I, I, that's, that's my issue. Like, I know that we had to do some uh filing and some uh end column. Um, armoring at least and repair, uh and I don't remember whether it was that one or not. There, I think there was one that was still waiting for more inspections too, so they hadn't gotten around to it yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I guess the long and short of it is, no, I don't remember.
Me neither.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's a lot of bridges.
Yeah, I usually try to keep up on that.
And something like Saginaw, some of that uh from the railroad was put there the year that they were working on Dakota Street. That that railroad crossing, so some of that's been there that long.
Really?
So I don't know. But that's all I've observed that it's been some.
Yeah, it it's probably been lying out there in the weeds and I just didn't notice them around uh the weeds were happening to cut.
Since I travel a daily.
Yes, yes. But I think that's one that they had. They they'd talked to us about it because they wanted us to correct posture and said, no, maybe not.
So I guess the the next thing is um building project, but unless somebody knows something about it that. Yeah, but usually it's Travis who gives us that update. Um, joint jurisdiction, you're having a hearing?
Yes, we're having now the first uh public uh hearing or not, it's not a hearing, really, it's a.
Comment, public comment.
Uh, soliciting comments and and revealing to the general public uh. This draft, the first draft of the the new joint jurisdiction comprehensive plan. And so we're, yeah, gonna look at that down at the library. It's at six thirty.
Is it six thirty? So I I was a little, a few people were, okay, because I Jim Peterson, I know, we thought it was maybe five thirty, but. I'll ta- I'll talk to him.
Yeah. Paperwork says six thirty and I think that's what's been on the city's website. It is joint jurisdiction, it's a joint action, joint. Work that's done both by the city of Vermillion and us on in the joint jurisdiction area surrounding uh the city of Vermillion. We will have new maps that'll be there. We've got a. Uh, Sean, or guy that's been. Spearheading this for us from uh CCOG will be there to give a presentation. It's going to be in part a poster session where. People will be able to see, see and go up and look at uh. The paperwork, the maps and stuff, you know, as well as have an idea of what uh. Uh, the verbiage of the joint jurisdiction would be. So this will be just a first look at that. Uh, first look outside of our joint committee between the city that the that the city and. Uh, the county is is uh uh put together and I'm our commission. Representative there and and Drew has been on it and Cindy Aiden, the chair of the planning commission, has been on that. And uh Marty Gilbertson, so those are the ones on our side that uh have been part of building this comprehensive plan. So think of this as a first look for the general public to have a look at it, give us some input and maybe. We can end up with some improvements before we enact it. A little late this year, we don't.
Great.
Great.
Yeah, I do plan on going. I'd like to, I'm excited to see, to see what's, what it looks like, yeah.
Maybe what's the date of that?
Today.
Oh, it's today, yes, tonight. We're not serving supper, so. So six thirty, don't come hungry.
And uh a- any, any movement on the comprehensive plan for the county?
Uh, no, this is, you know, this has really been, you know, we uh. Well, a year ago when we really started working on this joint jurisdiction count plan, which uh the city's ahead of us. On their account plan, and that kind of drove this to for us to catch up on this as well as. Some of the questions that have been coming out, out in joint jurisdiction, uncertain zoning and and building permits and all that sort of stuff. So we're, we we were uh meeting weekly, every week.
Well, and then you did the solar, you did the solar framework too, so.
So it, we are are uh as far as planning itself, our own planning commission are, which meets monthly. Are between those, they've really eaten up a lot of our time, but we'll be, we'll get to that.
Alright. Anything else on joint jurisdiction?
No, I think that's, that's uh, we'll have more questions after tonight. You have a little luck.
Alright, great. Um, any other commissioner reports? Anything else we're doing? We've we've put that on the agenda because I realize so many times I would like. It's not worth an agenda item, but I would like to just report on, you know, CCOG meeting or ICAP meeting or. Um, yeah, I'll just tell you what ICAP is working on is housing, um and in particular affordable housing. That's where we're spending most of our energy. But we're also working with um the um. Ag ex- ag extension, no, the four H and the fair board um on the possibility of relocating that. Because they're looking for more space. They really, really want, they need more space. Um, but it's kind of a catch twenty-two because every time there is a land with more space. They say, but it's not in the city. And then uh they look for more places. Well, there's nothing in the city and then they're back to outside the city, so we'll see, we'll we'll see where that comes down. The land for the fair is actually owned by the city of Vermillion and it's leased to um to the county. And so at what the city would like to do with that land is use it for housing. I mean, it's just prime territory, walking distance to the grocery store, walking distance to downtown. Um, so, uh, you know, I I I think ICAP is just trying to move that along uh while encouraging. The VCDC and developers to um to do infill within within the city.
Several of the buildings out there are really at the end of their useful life too, you know, sometimes we end up with like sheep barns and hog barns. That sort of stuff, you know, well, we could just get a, we have a new site, we just jack those up and move them to a new site. Um, when we did our commissioners tour a few years ago and looking at the condition of the those buildings that. Most of them wouldn't survive a move, so we're really stuck with that. On a related yet unrelated note too, that one other thing is is that Vermillion Public Transit. Um, has to move out at this point, you know, for for the fair, the week of the fair.
Yeah.
Every year.
It's a big issue.
So it's kind of a big issue to them because they are required by some of their federal rules and or mandates. That they have to house the buses inside all the time. Even moving out for a week uh isn't allowed by the rules that they have to work under. So this week, all week, we moved in two buses into my personal building out on the edge of town. And I've done that the last three or four years. Uh, it just gives you an idea how important that is to them. And uh what finding a new home for the fair would help that issue.
Yeah. Yeah, I think a lot of those buildings, to quote a former Realtor I worked with, are held up by turbines holding, holding hands.
It's held up by whole, float, floats.
So all those turbines holding hands, keeping that structure going. It's just, I don't know. Bad, bad luck. Um. Any other?
Uh, so I guess I've got got a couple others. I uh so been attending VCDC meetings, they're moving along. Um, one thing uh on on the radar is uh likely a capital campaign, so. Um, it's if they're considering themselves overdue for it, so this is like, I think, the sixth year since the since the last one. Um, and in order to keep supporting growth in the in the county, that's gonna be, gonna be next, so they're doing a great job laying the groundwork for that, doing a lot of good research. Um, they're not hiring an outside company to handle it, which I think is a really good cause, and so I've been impressed uh that the current. Current organization is doing a real good job with transparency. Um, I attended a, they did just a open meeting for any. Uh, VCDC board members that wanted to attend to go look in detail into their finances um and did a great job. You know, it just really answered any questions that we had and uh so really appreciated that. Um, at a Clay County Youth Trust Fund meeting, we generally meet once a year. I think we're probably gonna have two meetings this year possibly. Um, and uh approved uh slate of uh scholarships and uh we are. Had a little bit of a reorganization. Um, our treasurer left and uh wanted a new one, so yeah, but nothing. Of great consequence to report on there, but started to share that and uh pie sales do go to support the Clay County Youth Trust Fund, which supports all the youth of Clay County, so. But it's a little plug for that. Um, one, one thing that uh is is not a uh, it's not a report, it's not on the agenda, but it is a discussion of a future agenda item. I wanted to check back in with the commission um a while back. Um, I'd attended the the last Southeast District meeting and there was a presentation on an online. Uh, online permitting system that Yankton County uses and that uh District Three built for them, uh that's really wowed me. Um, and uh so a representative from District Three and also um uh the Yankton County Zoning Administrator. Uh, would be willing to come to our, to our meeting and just walk us through what they have. Um, and so we could see any features that might be different than things that we have that we're offering. Uh, there was generally. It support for that uh on the commission and so I I reached out to them uh and that they were willing to come to a meeting, I think August thirteenth. So that would be like our next meeting was the date that I had proposed for them. Um, in some conversations with Drew, uh it sounds like uh. He currently feels that the office probably doesn't need uh what what they have to offer. Um, so. After having that conversation, I just wanted to check back in. I mean, I don't, I certainly don't want to uh, you know, pressure Drew to uh. To 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 do things that he thinks are inefficient um or or not a good use of uh county time or resources or would be burdensome or difficult. Um, but it did seem like there were some features that uh that we don't currently have. Um, and maybe, maybe not in the short term, but in the long term, it might be good to to see what those are and compare them with what we have. So I just wanted to check back in with others and see, should I tell these folks, no, we don't need you to come to a meeting, we're we're fine with what we got right now? Or are people still interested in uh in at least hearing what they have to offer?
Yes, my, my question would be how um how would it? Would it make it easier for citizens to use the services of.
I think that's something that I would, I would like to to let them discuss with us if people are interested in hearing that, so.
Is that, for example, if it put. Uh, build the applications online or if it, you know, if it added to the services citizens were getting.
It seemed to me that potentially it could, um, but I think uh I think that, you know, having Drew in the discussion so that he can. Kind of answer, because he was able to answer for me some ways where I wasn't seeing some functionality. Um, and he's also has had some experience um attempting some online permitting that I think is is relevant to discussion as well. So if you guys are interested in having a discussion, let's put it on the agenda and we'll, we'll have have that. Um, if you feel like that, don't bother, we got too much on our plate already.
I feel my information and education is important, whether we use it or not.
Okay, that sounds good, yep.
Knowledge is knowledge. Yeah, there's quite a bit that's in their package that that Drew has parallel stuff that's. In s- in some of it is an exact copy. And there's, but there's other spots that may maybe different and it's all, you know, when I talked to him about it here a while back, that uh. He's aware of it, quite aware of it, because he's worked quite a bit with the uh in the permitting system in Yankton County. Uh, where this, this really had its, its uh start. Uh, and uh, so, you know, he's, he's pretty comfortable with it, he has now, but that doesn't mean we. Can't or shouldn't have a, have a look at it collectively.
Okay, that sounds good. Well, I'll connect with them and make sure that they're still on for the thirteenth and you should see that. Thank you, and that's all.
Um, any need for an executive session?
Don't have to throw anybody out. Yeah, how are you gonna know when to leave? Uh, I do have one other just unrelated item. I, my, I am uh doing my very last. Ask your commissioner Ollie class on October seventh. And uh I just, you know, there again, I want to make sure you guys are aware with that, of that and. And uh comfortable with uh me doing that. And if you're interested in participating, I don't furnish bullseye t-shirts or anything.
But we might wear them anyway.
And this would be, yes, it's after lunch again, one thirty to, one thirty to to two thirty and. Usually spills over another half hour of these things, so. So there will be an Ollie class there. I'm also teaching another Ollie class that that's can be in of interest to folks uh. Uh, where our drinking water comes from. That's in September. And uh, that's gonna involve a a tour of the wa- the water treatment plant. Uh, my class will be, it's two hours long, my class will be in the library. It'll be generally how, where we get our drinking water, whether that would be from the tap in Vermillion. Or from your water well out of the county, or if you uh have some interest in how Lewis and Clark works. Or where your bottom water comes from and just a sort of those, just kind of a.
I've actually. Request a tour of Lewis and Clark.
Yeah, I I'm signing up.
Yep, sounds great.
And uh, in fifteen minutes, there's a uh Ollie up, open house down at the library too. And we've got the new catalogs all set, so.
A lot of great offerings.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I, I think I have thirty checkbooks. In the Vermillion and Zoom offerings and I know I can't make all those, so there are choices to be made.
Yeah, alright. Well, on that note, if there is no further business to come before us. I would entertain a motion to let her.
So.
Is a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.